Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. I will ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest. If at some point throughout the meeting you find that you do, please declare it at that time. Under new business, we have the CIO and COVID-19 Command Team's report with regard to a proposed community safety plan for the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive. And before I pass it over to George, I will just take an opportunity to thank staff for all of their input into this. As sitting members of council, we know that we will never please everybody all the time. And with COVID, we've been trying to balance the needs of everyone. We have a responsibility to look after the best interest for the entire community as a whole. And closing the sand portion of Beach Drive, it was a necessity. It allowed us the time to work out a plan so that the area could be used by the public, which will also support our businesses down there. So today is day six of the closure. It just closed last Thursday. We've had some less than great weather during that time. So hopefully, council will see the benefit in today's report. And with that, I will pass it over to you, George.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Good afternoon. Good to see you, everyone. On today's Zoom meeting, I'm joined by our Fire Chief Mike McWilliam and our Senior Municipal Law Enforcement Officer Jeff Regan. Mike is going to assist in my presentation if I forget anything. As a representative on the command team with respect to my presentation, Mike is certainly going to jump in and assist. And Jeff has prepared a complimentary operations plan that he's going to speak to briefly after we have the discussion with respect to the safety plan. So both of those individuals are on the call as well. So thank you very much. In your agenda package is a report from the command team, and it outlines a community safety plan to use the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive. After the council decision on July 2nd, staff worked hard to implement the closure of the sand portion of Beach Drive, and we're successful in getting everything done as of July 9th. So the beach, the sand portion of Beach Drive was closed as of July 9th. In closing the beach, four pods were created. The way they were delineated was that there was access points provided to the provincial park, the sand portion of the beach. And if you look at the map enclosed in your agenda, you'll see how the four pods are organized with a passageway from each of the main access points to the beach. So we closed off these areas, and that's what is in place as of today. And if you monitor from time to time or have been down to the beach, you'll see that the public are accessing the provincial park lands, the beach, through those access points. So as part of the conversation the command team had was, once we had these, basically this plan in place to close the beach, it was, is there a manner in which the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive could be reopened? And we turned to the guidelines issued by the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit, which are included in your package, and they provide public health guidance for public beaches. And although the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive is not a public beach, a lot of these points are applicable because it is being used as a beach. So we went through that, and through that process, we developed a safety plan. And Craig Williams, our deputy chief, took the lead on this with input from all the command team members, and we were presenting it to you today. The key principle in development of this plan was to ensure the safety of the public, both our residents and those visiting to the community. The command team understood and fully supported council's decision with respect to the closure of the beach, given what had occurred on July 1st and the last two weekends in June. However, in recognizing that public beaches are available to the public and the provincial park beach is adjacent to the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive, the command team felt that there may be a way to open the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive and do it in a safe manner, safe to the residents and safe to our visitors. So using the nine ambassadors that council had approved at the July 2nd meeting, the original intent of these ambassadors was to provide guidance to the public as they arrived at the beach, point them in the right direction with respect to accessing open beach areas. It was felt that these nine ambassadors could be used to staff entry points into the compound or the pods. And through that mechanism, we would be able to control the access to these pods, control the number of people in the pods, as well as ensuring appropriate physical distancing within each of these pod areas. Now, a question has come up with respect to the provincial announcement yesterday of entering into stage three of the province's economic reopening. And, excuse me, in that announcement and in the guideline that was been issued by the province, they've lifted the restriction on gatherings to 100 persons. So the limitations with respect to gatherings apply to organized events. So if it was an organized outdoor event or a spontaneous outdoor event, then those limits of 10 persons apply. And now it's going to 100 persons as of Friday. However, that's not applicable to the beach. However, what is applicable to the beach is the principle of social gatherings or social circles, I should say, and physical distancing. So with respect to the individual pods, we will certainly be monitoring with respect to the social circles where a family or two families may come and sit together within that pod area. As long as they're part of the same social circle, then they would be permitted. And as long as there's physical distancing between them and the next group, which is the two-meter physical distance, then they would be allowed to enter the pod. Once the ambassador had determined that the pod was at capacity, then it would indicate that to any further individuals that were coming down. The pod entrance would be marked with a cone, and the person would be advised to go to the next available pod that may still have capacity. So we're able to limit the numbers that go into each pod. We're able to provide information to visitors to our beach so that they're aware of the limitations with respect to physical distancing, with respect to washing hands, et cetera, et cetera. So we feel that by implementing this plan, that we could allow the public, visitors, to return to use the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive in a safe manner. One of the things that we've heard over the last two to three weeks from our residents is the desire to go to the beach, but really nowhere to go. They felt uncomfortable with the crowds. They felt uncomfortable with the lack of observance of physical distancing. So one of the recommendations from the command team was to designate Pod 1 for residents only. So this pod, which is closest to the Spruce Street parking lot, would be designated for residents only. And Jeff will go into a little bit of a discussion in terms of how that will be managed. So that will give the residents an opportunity to come down to the beach, enjoy the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive in an area that's designated for them. So, your worship and members of council, that summarizes basically the safety plan. I'll just turn to the fire chief, if I may, to see if there was anything that he wanted to add to the overview. Chief?
Thanks. No, Mr. CIO, I think you captured it in its entirety, the conversations that we've had as the command team. It is worth noting, though, that like everything else that's gone on with COVID, it's a plan. It'll get us started. We think we've put a lot of measures in place that are going to work. Will we have to change it as we go? It's possible, but this is a really good starting point for us.
Thank you, chief. One thing that I forgot to mention was with respect to enforcement, and I think that's an important point, your worship, members of council. Certainly, our ambassadors are basically goodwill individuals that will be practicing their public relations skills, encouraging people to follow the rules as are laid out, but they don't have any enforcement capability. So our municipal law enforcement officers will be available via portable radio to assist where required and where needed as well. Her worship and I met with the OPP detachment commander and the operations manager for Central Region, and we had a discussion about the community safety plan and reviewed the principles of the safety plan, and they were supportive of it. So in terms of a triage for calls, we anticipate that our first action from our ambassador will be going to the municipal law enforcement officer. And if that doesn't resolve the matter, then the municipal law enforcement officer will call upon the OPP. And so that's kind of how the enforcement aspect will work with respect to that. Where in the past, the OPP were not that engaged. Her worship and I left the meeting with the sense that the OPP, based on the community safety plan as outlined, will be engaged in supporting us to ensure that the physical distancing and the capacity measures are enforced. So thank you, worship, but I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask if there's any questions of George or the other staff that's on the call. Counselor Wells?
Thank you, worship, to George. Beach Drive, and let me start by saying I will be supporting the motion. I don't think, you know, we're trying to find a balance, as you've already said, between public health and our business community and, you know, welcoming to a degree the visitors that we can accommodate coming to town. Unfortunately, nobody's written a playbook for all of this. So we are sort of in a trial and error. We look at what other communities are doing and see how they will fit with our community, because no two communities are the same. The ownership of beaches is a big factor. So you can't compare us to necessarily Coburg or to even Innisville next door or Orillia. But I think people are, you know, I don't like calling it trial and error because it, in my mind, has a bit of a negative connotation, but that's really what it is. We try things and see how the best they work because they've never been tried before. And if we have to modify it, then we will do that at the time. Just a couple of questions. The support, I'm happy to hear that OPP are now saying that they will be supportive of our bylaw enforcement people because previously they had said they didn't have sufficient resources. So I'm wholly hopeful that that will come to pass, that they will be quickly responsive to anything that's needed because that was one of my questions is where is the support for the ambassadors? And you've answered that. Another question I had is managing not just the entry to these pods in terms of how many people can go in and whether they're resident or not, that's one big task. But we also have that entire stretch of provincial park beachfront across the front. And I guess I'm just curious how the command team sees the management of people, for the want of a better phrase, jumping the rope, because there is now a rope through the post there. That's quite a long stretch. So, you know, is there a sense as to how we're going to manage people that choose to be on the provincial beach and then suddenly say, oh, you know what? I'd like to go there or go here, and they just come across from the provincial park side? So that was one of the questions I had. And I guess the other question I had was, within these pods, I do know that we've just passed a new bylaw with respect to tents, gazebos, whatever else you want to call them on the beach. In my own mind, I'm thinking that, and again, I, you know, I look to others for their opinion for sure, but that perhaps within these pods, that bylaw needs to be put on reserve. And then, in fact, I'd be tempted to say there are no tents or gazebos within that pod area because of the amount of space it takes up. Anyway, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you for that. If Jeff is on the call, maybe I'll ask him to touch on some of those points because I know the team has thought those through. Jeff?
Thanks, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Wells. So I'll start by talking about how to control access from the beach side where it's only delineated from rope. The initial plan, we considered issuing wristbands or issuing hand stamps. We are going to use wristbands. In the resident-only pod, we're going to have pink wristbands to stay consistent with the resident parking pass for the season. Where it's a high-density day, usually our Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays, or where weather is projected to be extremely warm, we will upstaff for those shifts with our ambassadors so that one ambassador can remain at the entrance and one can be patrolling the perimeter of the pod. Obviously, at that point, you can identify those with wristbands and without wristbands. And we'll be trying to direct all individuals trying to enter the pod to the designated entrance off the pedestrian corridor. At that point, if there's individuals that are identified without wristbands, they'll be asked to leave as they've entered without going through the proper access. So we do have wristbands prepared and enforcement capabilities to do that.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Bray, you are next. Do you have to unmute?
I thought I did. I did. Can you hear me now? Question about the fencing. It doesn't go all the way around, does it? So you just confirmed that it's a rope along the front? So I guess the wristband is what will control the population within the pod? That was my first question, and I'll work on my second one because it escaped me. Thanks.
Okay, Jeff?
Through you, your worship. I think we've identified that that will be our major area of concern for uncontrolled entry. Through our experience to date, there hasn't been a lot of people jumping over the snow fence. It's been, any issues we've had has been on the beach side. So obviously, our ambassadors will be down there as much as possible, especially where there's a team of two. One can always be patrolling and, you know, for the most part, directing their time along the roped portion. So yeah, wristbands are a really easy way to visually oversee who has permitted access and who doesn't, but also will be down there as much as possible.
Okay, Mr. CIO, did you have something to add to that?
Thank you, worship. I know Counselor Wells had a second part of his question there dealing with tents, and I thought maybe that Mr. Regan could respond to that question as well.
Certainly. Jeff?
Sure, my apologies for that. I mean, should council want to consider putting that bylaw on hold that they're more than able to do so? Currently, I was anticipating having the ambassadors educate on those rules because there's a lot of good rules, obviously, in that bylaw that would be good to still have in place while we're allowing access. You know, tents could have pros and cons. Pros, meaning they have more space to physically delineate to ensure social distancing. But there's also cons, like the councillor said, that, you know, they are taking a lot more space up. So I know we did project our capacity limits based on the amount of space and the amount of distance between groups. So should council want to consider that? That's obviously, they're more than welcome to do so.
And I would assume that's something that you're going to monitor as we go. As was said earlier, we're going to see how things go, and we will have, like we do every day with COVID matters, we're changing and we'll have to adapt as we go. Deputy Mayor Bray, did you remember your other question?
Thanks. Just a comment, I guess. I'm looking forward to the snow fences coming down. I understand we might want to keep a resident-only portion, you know, for the rest of the season. But I think, you know, this is a good first step to opening up the small portion of the beach, Beach Drive, that we do control. But I would certainly like to see it open up again and enforce and educate so that people look out for their own safety. I really struggle with the municipality telling people where they should be sitting and how many people can sit. And, you know, I think as Canadian citizens, we should be able to make those decisions ourself. Obviously, some people didn't, and we're all paying that price. But I really do look forward to that snow fence coming down and full access being given to those to use the beach responsibly.
Thank you. And I think as we watch things evolve and, you know, new congregation numbers and things are released, and that's something that the command team can look at and bring forward to council at that time. Counselor Boulanger?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Byfoltie. First of all, I'd like to thank the command team because I had supported the motion to close this section of beach based on the fact that we would move quickly to find a safe way to reopen. So this is very good news. Couple of questions is, I think we did a very good job as a town to try to let the community know that the provincial park portion of the beach was still open, and we were closing just a portion of the beach. However, the media didn't always respect the message, and there was a lot of confusion. And a lot of people were under the impression that the entire beach was closed. And my point with that is, I'm not sure we're going to get the same kind of media coverage with reopening. So I think we do have to do a very good job of communicating in whatever way we can in Southern Ontario to make sure that people know that we are opening and that we will be able to accommodate more people on the beach going forward. The other, only other question I had is that, is part of people entering the pod, will they be advised that if they're leaving the pod for an extended period or leaving the pod for the day, that they're going to let the ambassador know so that we can then understand that there's going to be more room in the pod for someone else that is maybe coming later in the day? Thank you.
Sure. Jeff, can you address that, please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, worship and councillor. So we will have signage erected on the inside of the fence, perimeter fencing, to indicate the designated exit points where individuals obviously fail to use the exit, which may occur. The ambassadors will recognize that there's been, you know, been a group that has vacated from the pod, and we will allow more members of the public into the pod if it was closed because of capacity limits. So we'll be monitoring that regularly, keeping an eye on it, and using our counter to know how many people are in the pod at one time and ensuring physical distancing is taking place. And if that's the case, then we can allow more individuals into the pod. But all efforts will be directed to, you know, signage, directing those to the proper exit points. And, you know, there may be occasion where that won't occur, but we'll react as needed.
Okay, thank you. And just as far as, I've received three interview requests today just based on the fact that this is on our agenda through our communications. If this is approved by council, Mike will be sending out to all of the ones that, you know, interviewed me when we made this decision before to close it, they will be made aware that this is open. And I know that there were some people in the community who felt that, you know, the message was taken and it was taken wrong. But we did our best to ensure that our message was the sand-covered portion of Beach Drive was closed, but the provincial park was open. So we did the best we could. And, you know, businesses and others needed to assist in sharing that message. Counselor Watson?
Thank you, your worship, and I thank Counselor Boulanger for raising the last point about the communication. The most frequent concern that I've been hearing from our Beach One businesses is a confusion that is out in the media whether our beaches are actually open or not. I believe we, as a town, have done a good job in conveying that the provincial beaches are open, but the general public is still not clear that we only control the Beach Drive portion. Tourists are arriving at businesses and literally asking the business, are we open? Can we go to the beach? Can we not go to the beach? Wasaga Beach is a unique community in the way that we have to partner with our provincial government and Ontario Parks. Perhaps we could request from the provincial partners in conjunction with our town, and the mayor has just talked about the media requests this afternoon, to put out a loud and clear message that our beaches are open, that social distancing is being enforced and practiced, and that we have eight different and separate beach areas to enjoy in Wasaga Beach. So I would thank you for your consideration on that. And I have one specific question to Mr. Regan. The resident pod, how do you define a resident? I'm hoping that it's a property owner in Wasaga Beach as opposed to somebody that lives here year-round because I think they, you know, they pay their fair share. So I'm hoping that's the case, and I guess you're going to have to show some piece of idea. I don't think we talked about that, but if that's the case, I'm happy with that, that it's supposed to be people that live here 24/7 and in that own property. Thank you.
I think that is the case, but Jeff, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, worship. A councillor will be obviously asking for identification that shows they're a resident or a tax bill or other municipal bill that has their name on it. So that's how we'll be identifying a resident.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Counselor Kinney?
Thank you, worship, and this is to Jeff. I understand that there's going to be pink wristbands given out. Is that to everyone in every pod? I just need clarification on that, or is it just for the residents in their residence pod?
Jeff?
Yes, so that was just for the residents in the residence pod. That way, it's easily identifiable based on the municipal resident parking pass. And all of our ambassadors will be aware that pink is designated for the resident-only pod. The other pods will be issued other various colors of wristbands.
Go ahead, Counselor Kinney.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for the follow-up question. Is the wristband going to be dated? I'm just putting it across for, like, if I come on Saturday and I'm from the GTA and I get a bright blue one. If I come back on Sunday, is it a green one or is it going to be dated? I'm just looking for consistency across the board for your officers to identify who should be there on that particular day. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes, thank you. So we weren't planning on dating the wristbands. We were going to always use pink in the resident pods, and where individuals are exiting through the controlled exit areas, we'll be cutting off wristbands so that they are to be reissued a new one the following day. The other pods will have a wristband change of color daily, so they will have daily colors for those pods.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Mr. CIO?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to clarify, the deputy mayor made a comment about the black fencing coming down. So the intent is to keep the fencing up. That is the only way we can control access. So we're going to maintain the snow fencing along the sidewalk and the event fencing along the corridors. And so there will be that control, and that's a very important aspect of it. The only area that is somewhat controlled is the area next to the beach because it's only a rope that somebody can quickly hop over. And as the senior municipal law enforcement officer advised earlier, that's the area where there will be patrols to ensure that people are just reminded about the capacity of the particular pod. But I didn't want anybody to leave to think that the fencing is going to come down because that would deviate from the intent is to provide a controlled access to the various pods, the four pods that are down at the beachfront.
Correct, unless different restrictions are lifted from the province. It's a moving target with these things. So if something changes with the province as far as congregation or anything like that, that would be a trigger for the command team to discuss it at that time.
Yes, your worship, you're absolutely correct. So if circumstances do change and there's restrictions are lifted, the big one being the physical distancing and the social gathering or the social, what's the term? The social circle. So those things go hand in hand, but we'll continue to monitor. And as the province comes out with new directives and whatnot, we'll be quick to review them and implement as required.
Right. We're doing the best we can. I know that we will not please everybody all the time, but we're doing the best we can to safely allow people to use the area that the town controls. So that's the intent of this, so that people can still enjoy it, still get down there to the businesses and enjoy what's left of summer. So is there any other questions? And if not, could I have a mover and seconder for this motion? Moved by Counselor Kinney, seconded by Counselor Wells. The council approved the COVID-19 Beach Drive Promenade Community Safety Plan. Further, the council delegate authority to the Town of Wasaga Beach COVID-19 Command Team to make adjustments to the plan to respond to changing circumstances as they arise. There's no further conversations. I'll ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And my apologies, I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that Counselor Foster had a previous commitment, so he was unable to be here today. And with that, uh our confirmatory bylaw, if I could have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Belanger and Deputy Mayor Bray resolved that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the Corporation of the Town of Wasaga Beach at its special meeting held Tuesday, July 14th, 2020 be received and be deemed to have been read a first, second, and third time, passed in number 202079. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good afternoon.